If you join us on the flat slate, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to Bourbon County Commission meeting July 22. I want some discussion before we pass the approval of the consent agenda. I had called in and asked that approval of June financials be taken off the agenda. Somehow it didn't. You guys can pass it. I got it about 2:00. I have not had a chance to review it, so I'm not going to vote yes on it.
Yeah, I haven't had time to look at it.
Okay. So we can approve the minutes?
Yeah.
And put the approval of June financial next week as I asked to earlier today. Somehow it's misunderstanding, I'm sure.
So I make a motion to approve the minutes from 7:15 to 2024.
I'll second the approval of the minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'll make a motion to move the June financial report to next Monday, 29th. We all have an opportunity to review it, so.
Aye.
Second.
Can I have something to say about?
Yes, sure.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know if you do that, we're going to be in violation, an audit violation. The clerk has a statute that needs to be published before then.
Okay.
Treasurer has a statute and you guys have a statute, so it'll be violation of three sections.
Well, and I understand what you're saying, Patty, and I really appreciate your input.
Yeah.
But if that important, why did we get it two hours ago?
Well, I mean, from my standpoint, I gave Susan the information, the information she didn't have. Jennifer's been out sick.
Mm-hmm.
She had, she's been sick all week and everything. Susan went in today and balanced the statement so that she can get it to you guys in time to do that. So if there's any way you guys can look over it and approve it, we need that done.
Okay.
But that's what happened. I mean, is that Jennifer's.
Well, and I don't have a problem with moving forward with it, but I don't want two more, anymore, two-hour notice expecting me to approve a month of finances.
Right, yeah. I mean, I understand that it was something that, you know, she was waiting for that part of it.
And Clifton hadn't got a chance to see it. So you guys are asking us to vote on something that we haven't looked at?
Well, or you can take the time to go through it and, you know, it's pretty cut and dry, nothing, you know, we've got all the records and everything to back it up.
Okay. I don't have a problem voting on it then.
Okay.
You guys want to vote on it?
That's what I'm asking, so.
I mean, we can discuss it.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve June financials.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let's go, Clifton.
A public comment, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening. To begin with, I'd like to request a couple of additional minutes. I don't think I can quite make it in five, but I'll try.
Okay.
There's been a lot of confusion about zoning, what it is, what it can do, what it can't do, how to implement it, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing for the One commissioner stated that there's no such thing as limited zoning, but didn't really define what that meant other than zoning zoning. A member of the public who asked the commission to adopt limited zoning defined it as pertaining to only certain land uses. So I am here tonight to hopefully add some facts to a few important issues regarding zoning. To begin with, everyone needs to understand that zoning regulations do not apply to land used for agricultural purposes. That includes the erection and maintenance of buildings on that land that is used for agriculture, and this is specified by the state. Because the intention of this exemption is to provide, is to protect Kansas's most important industry, which is agriculture, courts have also upheld that your personal residence on agricultural land is also exempt from zoning restrictions. So that means that even if they wanted to, our commissioners here could not require a farmer or rancher to get a permit or pay a fee to build a barn or a house on their property. This ag exemption isn't something that can be changed. It's set by Kansas statute, and if you want to look it up, that statute is KSA 19-2921. In other words, nobody here in the county should be fearful that if Bourbon County were to adopt some zoning, that they'd have to pay a fee, get a permit, jump through a lot of hoops, just to be able to build a barn on their farm. That's not going to happen. Next, regarding limited zoning, I'd like to give an example of what that could possibly look like in Bourbon County. Just 10 days ago, LeBect County implemented zoning of all unincorporated areas of their county. They created four different zoning districts. A1, agricultural. A2, agricultural transition, which covers the area just outside of cities, what you might consider to be the suburbs. V1, a village district, that's the little towns in the county. And then the fourth is for their large industrial park that they have outside of Parsons. While all of LeBect County is now zoned, their zoning regulations only place restrictions on 11 specific land use items. Those 11 items require what's called a conditional use permit. Many, there are certain guidelines that must be followed. They do need to apply for that permit and then follow certain guidelines for one of those 11 uses only. The 11 uses that require a permit and put special requirements on construction are: number one, certain public facilities or buildings. Number two, commercial communication structures, such as antenna towers that are over a certain height. Number three is crew camps associated with conditional use permits. Number four, landfills, transfer stations, incineration plants, or recycling centers. Number five is sexually oriented businesses of a certain nature. Number six is solar energy conversion systems of a utility large scale. Number seven is utility substations, pumping stations, and water towers. Number eight is wind energy conversion systems of a utility large scale. Number nine, battery storage, battery, battery energy storage systems. Number 10 is private, meaning nonutility, renewable energy transmission lines. And number 10 is other commercial energy generating systems. So if it's not on this list of 11 items, then it's not regulated and can be built anywhere within the county without a permit or any special requirements. Now, of these 11 items, any of them can be put on agricultural land after getting a conditional use permit and meeting the certain requirements that those entail. If it's on agricultural transition land, only the five energy generating or storage items are allowed, and that is with a conditional use permit. If it's in the village district, then none of those 11 items are allowed. And like all zoning regulations, per Kansas statute, any use in existence at the time the zoning is passed is grandfathered in. The zoning that LeBect County adopted is what most people would consider to be limited zoning. It applies only to a few specific land uses, and it allows all housing, retail businesses, and light industrial applications to go in anywhere in the county without permits or restrictions, other than the ones that are imposed by the state or federal, like your sewage, septic tank type requirements. At the same time, this recognizes that energy production, storage, and transmission is a unique industry that is changing rapidly and requires special rules to protect both the landowners who want to use their land in this manner and neighboring landowners who are not really thrilled about the idea of living next to a solar field. This type of zoning allows more transparency for the public and the commissioners to know about these developments earlier in the process, rather than waiting until it appears to commissioners. So that happens because of the zoning, because of the conditional use permits that are required. In closing, it seems like to date throughout this issue, a lot of hoops have been requested of the public. We heard for a long time, bring us a petition, then it was bring us a letter from attorney, then it's we'll decide once the setback committee recommends. Last week, there was some mention of getting a lawsuit or filing an injunction. The only way zoning can be enacted is by commissioner resolution. The entire process involves the commission passing a resolution. You would then form a zoning and planning board. There would be zoning policies written up, numerous public hearings where the public has the opportunity to provide input on what the policy would look like. And all of that, then you adopt it as a final plan. So my question is, why do you keep insisting that residents jump through a bunch of hoops that are not really necessary? If you don't know whether a majority of the residents want this type of limited zoning, just put it on the ballot in November and find out. You have the ability to do that just by making a resolution or making a motion and passing. The process could be started as early as tonight. But if you truly want to act for the majority of residents, rather than your own personal desires, just put it on the ballot and find out. Anyone that wants to read the full content of LeBect County zoning regulations, come find them at lebectcounty.com. You just, on the homepage, scroll down about halfway. There's a big headline that says recent events. It's the first thing under that headline.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Was one of these commercial? Did that require a special use permit, like a restaurant or a motel?
No.
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 No, it wasn't part of it?
Not at all.
I got a copy of it. I asked her to send me a copy of it last week, and she sent me a copy of it. The only thing that is really zoned is their industrial park, their county industrial park, which I think is down by Shenood or something.
Yeah, by Parsons.
And then they have a housing development somewhere that is.
Would you mind? Well, I can look later at those 11 uses again, what they were. I can look it up later though, but.
Okay.
Okay.
But now, was they seeing one out?
No, they wasn't seeing one out.
Solar panels, anybody?
They did have conditional use permits, wind and solar were conditional, and battery storage were all conditional use items, as well as like a telephone tower, if it's over. I believe their regulation said 150 feet. I might be mistaken about that.
Would it be your opinion that we should have a book or something put together before we present it to the public, put zoning on the ballot?
I believe.
They're going to say, what do you mean? What do you mean?
My opinion is, before you put any question asking, do you want this or not, is that yes, there should be some public meetings where zoning is explained so people understand what it is you're talking about doing. Because again, zoning can run as easy as this, or it can get pretty detailed and specify a lot of different areas where certain things can or can't go.
So is Lynn County committing a crime then by cause, I mean, they, my understanding is in Lynn County, you have to have a permit to build a house or even to build a doghouse in rural.
Lynn County is zoned, and that's what their zoning regulations say.
Well, you just said that does, if it's agriculture on an agriculture rural area, that doesn't apply. So my question is Lynn County committing a crime?
Let me ask.
Do they say that?
Let me answer that. The county commission could go step forward and request building permits.
They could.
They could.
Yes.
And if you build a house, and we could go a step farther and say, any commercial, you need a special use permit.
They could, yes.
And maybe that's what Lynn County did. I don't know.
But we could put it in our resolution or on our ballot when we set it, and after, if it passes, if it passes, and we put it, we can make the resolution that says in order to add to this or take away from it, the entire commission has to agree.
Exactly, yes.
So that they can't, so one or two guys can't just decide to, now everybody has to have a building permit.
And I might be wrong, Cliff. That might not be the case. You could be right. They might be doing something bad up there. I don't know.
I'm just asking. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, state statutes.
According to what she read, state statute, according to what the state statute she read, doesn't require agriculture is safe, and yet you can build a barn, but you can't in Lynn County.
I'd say they probably want to step forward.
They are not following the state statute is what I would say, if that's truly the case, but I kind of question if that's the case.
Well, thank you.
So.
How do you get from agriculture to agriculture transition?
The transition is the area more immediately around a city.
Okay.
It would be kind of similar, like the three-mile zone, you know, like it's around.
The city of Wisconsin, the three-mile area is called residential suburban, and the three-mile are housing, et cetera, so.
Yeah.
And that's what they're calling agricultural transition. Okay. I got it.
Yeah. It's, you allow a few more, says, a few more restrictions, and then you get further out.
And I will read LeBect County, so.
Thank you.
And by the way, we give you 12 minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're not always bad guys, so. Anybody else want to, Cliff?
Michael.
Michael Hoyt.
Yes, sir. A couple of things. I got, as you all know, I'm leading up or heading up the petition initiative to move to five commissioner districts. And I got the, from the clerk's office, the number of signatures required.
Okay.
And that number, I'm not bringing this up because I'm concerned about being able to get 621 signatures, but I probably misspoke once or twice whenever I said that it was based on the last general election. This particular ordinance or KSA says 5% of registered voters. So that number implies that we have 12,000 people registered to vote in a county where the last census only said we had close to 15,000. So we don't have 3,000 kids? Tell me, that is trite. And when was the last time we went through our voter registration and purged those lists? I know there's somebody on that list that, Cliff, that you'd love to purge, and her name is Denise Duncan. And for all I know, every time that Deb Martin put in a core request for my voter registration, I may have been counted five times. Because every time I registered my car, which I had every right to do in Arizona, they registered me to vote in Arizona. So I'd have to come in here, fill out another voter registration. So we need to look into that, and I believe it could be as simple as sending out a card. Postages are cheap, but we need to purge that list because it makes us look bad as far as our participation in elections. Many other things that probably as a percentage of participation that we've had, like the last election we had, it was probably the highest participation we'd had in a while in a countywide election. So we, that was 2,000 people. But we have 14,000 registered voters, 14,000 to 15,000 citizens in the county.
And 12,000 registered voters.
And 12,000 registered voters.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Michael. Something needs done.
That's it, Matthew.
It ain't. And when I sent out cards to, in the city here, there were 180 people that were registered to vote at the address of the Garrison Apartments, and they were empty. That's when the college had it under renovation. So we need to go through those lists, whatever it takes. And I don't, you know, I'm sure there's a pathway to that.
I didn't, I mean, I hate to ask, well, Jennifer's not here, so unfortunately, isn't she the election officer for the county?
She is.
But I do agree with you, it needs to be looked at.
I'm sure, I'm sure she worked towards figuring it out.
Well, there was, I know there was some onerous restrictions that you had to miss two presidential elections before you could even be considered to be removed. But have we even looked to see if they have missed? I'm told they go through the obituaries every day and take those people off. I still found dead people on here. As an announcement, the next, for the next four days, Tuesday through Friday, we're going to be set up right on that corner, right over there, to get petition signatures. And as a service to our veterans, I'll be helping with anybody that needs assistance with filing a claim for compensation. Have my laptop there, we can get it all started right, right over there, under the blue tent.
Where at?
From, right in front of Matthews Church.
Okay.
Right up northeast corner. And you lost my, made me lose my train of thought. But I'll have all the forms. Just bring your DD 214, your discharge papers, that'll make it easy. Bring a copy if you can. If not, I'll have my printer there and I can make a copy of it for you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Anyone else with?
Nope. That's it.
Public comments? Well, commission comments? Oh, we have a gentleman here.
I'm sorry to do this. I need to ask for an amended to the agenda to go into executive session for two things. Litigation, actually some active ongoing litigation, and a acquisition of real property. Both of them came to light within the last probably two hours.
Okay.
I probably need seven minutes. We could kind of go in and come back out, maybe.
Would that be B2, probably?
It's, it's two of it. It's actually, there's two separate things we're going to talk about in that executive session. They both deal with legal stuff, but I just want to make sure we clarify that the second one is acquisition.
Okay.
B2 and 6.
Do you, do you say that? Never done one dual. Anyway, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session. How long, Justin?
Seven minutes.
Okay, make a motion first to add an executive session.
I'll second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 75-4319B2 for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and also B6 for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property. B3, commissioners, Justin Meeks will be for seven minutes. We'll return here at 5:58, sorry.
I'll second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.[1282.93]